The agenda.
Oh, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Salute.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications, course, comments, open forum, possibly limited to three minutes.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Uh, one, want to thank Thomas and Jerry. They've gone through up in the attic. Jerry sorted out. We've got a bunch more shredding to do, so that's another office to check off the list. So we're down to secondary roads as their left and basement or the attic, so we're down to that. We'll probably get one more, um, roll off from Kelly. Try to get it in and out of here before the snow flies. She said pretty good. Uh, other thing is on the Wednesday, twenty-ninth, we're gonna have a planning and zoning meeting to finish up the, uh, zoning request change for new co-op up by shredding. So, and how that'll work is they'll make their recommendation, they'll come to you the following Monday, and you can either grant that, change requests, or deny it, so.
What do they want to do up there?
Grain handling facility.
Is it?
Yep, they're gonna, they are.
And they're expanding.
And Sherban? Yeah, East Sherban.
East Sherban.
Yeah, where they have the Inhiber states, but they, it will be just a grain handling at this point. It won't be a female.
And this one is, I think if I understood right, it's like a flat storage.
There'll be some bins, but then, um, yeah, it'll be one of those flat storage buildings that has. Kind of a moving building, and they've done that in a few other sites that I've seen. Yeah, there won't be a con- any concrete structure. There'll be some bins and a leg and then a flat storage. And they already own the ground. I mean, now, we kind of had that feeling when they, when they bought that, because they bought forty-seven acres to start with. I think they were just waiting for another entity to decide what they were gonna do.
Very well put.
Yep.
He'll get in the middle of that.
Yep.
Jack? Michelle?
Doing good. Thank you.
Thomas?
Morning.
Good morning.
Not much to report. I did want to update the board on the, the caseload upstairs. Uh, we have an unusually high volume of cases right now. Uh, the increase seems to be primarily OWIs and marijuana offenses. Uh, but we're up to ninety-five pending criminal cases, which the only time in recorded history we've had that many was during the pandemic when the court shut down. We got up to about a hundred and ten. Normally, we're in the seventies, so we have, you know, fifty percent increase in cases, which, uh, is, is not a good position to be in because the highest crime rates are always Thanksgiving and Christmas. So I think this caseload is only gonna grow the next couple of months, so we'll be very busy upstairs managing our, our dockets. Thankfully, it's not, not violent crime, but lots of OWIs and lots of marijuana offenses.
Poor neighborhoods.
Yeah.
I do think that the, the pandemic and the associated changes in society, I think are playing a role in this. And it, it, it's not unique to Green County. I've, I've spoken with other county attorneys, uh, and they're seeing a similar crime wave, so to speak, statewide. Uh, and I think some of it has to do with government programming ending, uh, and either people are experiencing more financial stress, or their sense of entitlement has changed. Uh, but I do think we're seeing, still seeing some after effects from the pandemic and the government policies that were put in place during the pandemic.
Thank you.
Airport meeting. They still have four doors to install on old hangars, and they've been waiting for bids on that. They finally got the bids. I was under the wrong assumption on the spending. I thought it was in addition to what they're doing with the new hangar, but it's not. It's old doors that have been in place and onsite, but no one to install. They have to do some structural work to some of the old hangars, and, uh, so that's what that. I think the last time I talked, uh, that was seventy thousand was the amount they talked about. But this is just to install doors that already are on the facility. That the old hangars have the old wooden five pole doors that have to be propped up with posts so they don't fall into an airplane. That's the only one they went to.
I have region twelve. They check you aboard about the board. Kate Lumber.
I'm just here for the agenda.
Mike, are you here for the minute? Jim Didle?
Yes, sir. General Assistant.
Wade?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, we, uh, got all the salt and sand and mix done last week, which was a nice week for that. And we provided the city of Jefferson and others too, so that all worked out. Gonna get that completed last week. Now, we did put the new structure at Scranton. Were able to have a thousand tons of mixed product over there versus the two hundred that we used to have. Couple of routes, come on Jefferson, it's easier for them to load over there, more economic, or more. Uh, and it's just easier for us to, with, where they're running, to have load out of there instead of coming back to Jefferson. So that's nice to, the larger structure over there. A little, uh, some concrete patching yet this week. Flame broke pavement, kind of forgotten, uh, area yet there sometimes, uh, it's kind of isolated, but, uh, we're getting that, that done, uh, this week, and then, uh, Marshall Lou area, so. Some stuff from our, our bridge inspection we need to. So. About it.
It's good. You're all ready for the weather.
Okay. All right. Ready or not, ready.
We did receive, finally received our FEMA money, the five hundred and forty-three thousand, the last payment for the bridge, for the, um, Victor Bridge. Got that last week, so that's finally done.
That's good news.
Yes, and then, um, you guys need to be thinking of two comp board members. Mary Jane and Jim Lumber both said last year that they, their term was up, and they did not want to renew, so.
Mary Jane was supervisor.
Jim and Jim and Mary Jane were both yours, so.
Okay.
So within the next couple of weeks, you guys need to be. Members.
Are we all caught up, you know, from government money that is owned in county?
Yes, that was the last, and it's taken us eighteen months to get that.
Very large amount total.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let Jane know.
Yes, she was very happy.
That's a load off her mind.
Yeah.
You did notify her.
Yes, I did. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Scott? You just did a sales tax discussion. Each of these, I just need to read the.
Billy, how big was that FEMA payment?
It was, um, five hundred and forty-three thousand, one oh three forty-six.
Five forty-three.
Yeah, five forty-three, one oh three forty-six.
Tony reported the women's restroom. Fixed, except that you're waiting on one.
Yeah, they, they had ended up replacing two of the toilets, I think. One they had, because they knew for sure that one was gonna have to be replaced, but the other one they had to order. They didn't realize it was as in bad a shape as it was until they got to working on it, so. That'll be a couple of weeks, I think, maybe, before the, the two, two are up and running. It's the middle stall.
It's not.
That's not. But everything else had done. They, I think, worked, did some work on Thomas's restroom also, and did some work on some faucets. So I think everything is, to this point anyway, I think is.
Have you seen Judge Kester? Has she?
She's, she's here today.
She's here today?
Yes. I haven't seen her for a while.
I might stop up there and just touch base. I know it's been, we've moved on, but.
Yeah.
Okay, first item on our agenda is we need to do second tier canvas, the city slash school election for Green County Community School District Director and the PEPOL for the voters of Boone County's portion. On the PEPOL vote, election held on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three, two yes votes, and zero no votes, so a total of two.
Mm-hmm.
And on the school election held on the same day, Connie Boyd received two votes, Timothy Riphaven, two votes, Dylan McConnell, zero votes, and a scattering of zero votes, so a total of four votes.
And then there's, uh, on the second page. I think he just wanted to leave the total.
For everybody?
Yeah.
Connie Boyd received one thousand one hundred and ninety-three votes, Timothy Riphaven received nine hundred and ninety-one votes, Dylan McConnell received eight hundred and twenty-three votes, the total of three thousand and seven votes.
And then you just need to sign it.
Motion to approve these two.
Salute.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I know there are several votes that were from other counties. School districts crossover or?
Uh-huh.
For this. Was there, what are they all? Do you recall? The Dallas, Boone?
It's, it's, um, Polk, Dallas. Boone doesn't dip into us. We dip into them, but it's Boone-Rollston, South Central Calhoun, Southeast Valley.
Okay.
Yeah. We're, yeah. Green County School District is the only thing that dips into another county. Everything else dips into us.
Dips into us.
Yeah.
Okay. Our next item is to consider revisions to the Green County General Assistance Program and a discussion on possible increases to the general assistance policies. Mike, you want to come in? Sheriff?
I have the table. Two Z's for us, Mike, for the promotion.
I don't know if I can.
So I have, uh, two documents I'll pass around initially. So the first, you'll see some red, uh, on the page, that is the redlined copy of the existing policy, and then I'll pass around a clean copy if you were to accept all of those revisions, what the policy would look like. The first thing I want to mention, uh, on the redlined version, you'll see at the bottom, it says form update, March eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. I didn't really notice that until last night. Uh, so Ellen and I, Mike's predecessor and I, have gone through this policy four or five years ago, and I made a series of suggested changes to Ellen. Uh, and I'm guessing based on that update, uh, and kind of my own recollection, she must have updated this already in two thousand nineteen, but I don't think the board ever approved those changes. Uh, so that's the first thing that needs to be rectified, uh, is that whatever revision, and I think the revisions I initially suggested dealt with the appeal process. So there's a, a Supreme Court case, uh, that says essentially a person has a property interest in welfare benefits, a very controversial case. But basically, you know, the, the Fourteenth Amendment protects or guarantees due process of law for, uh, property, and the S- US Supreme Court said, well, a person who's receiving welfare has a property interest in the welfare they're receiving. And therefore, any effort to adjust or take away their welfare, the Fourteenth Amendment kicks in, and you have due process rights. And there's a lot of municipalities that don't have sufficiently robust appeal processes in place. And the Supreme Court said, no, if you take away someone's welfare, they have to have the right to appeal, because they have a property interest. So I think the changes Ellen made pursuant to my advice, uh, were kind of strengthening the appeal rights that people had in our general assistance program. So I think some of those changes are already in this policy, but were never approved by the board. So you would be approving things that aren't really, you don't see the changes already been made, but I, I think the only thing I would really encourage the board to do legally is to approve those changes, because otherwise our, our policy is constitutionally deficient. Uh, but Mike and I, uh, went through this program or this policy again, uh, over the last couple of years. It's been a long time coming. Uh, Mike and I have both been very busy. Uh, Mike also though consulted with, uh, Teresa Landsman at New Opportunities, uh, to get her input. Uh, a lot of these changes aren't substantive. They are, uh, just kind of cleaning up the language, uh, moving things around, making the, the, the policy more coherent and easier to read. Uh, I would just highlight a few changes that are more substantive in nature. First, on the first page, uh, three point oh one. If you look at the redlined version, it's a little bit easier to see the changes I've made, or the proposed changes I'm recommending. The last sentence of three point oh one, I always think it's good for county policies to cite the authority on the basis of which the the board is making the policy, so I'm recommending you add this sentence that this policy is being made pursuant to Iowa Code Section two fifty-two dot twenty-five sub one. Uh, so that, uh, that part of the code authorizes a board of supervisors to have a general assistance program. Uh, so that is the statutory basis, legal basis for this, uh, policy. Uh, in the next page, you see definitions, three point oh three. Uh, we just cleaned up the language. I added a definition for county. The word county is used throughout the policy, and of course, that means Green County, uh, but it's considered best practice to actually explain what county you're referring to. Uh, some things are not in alphabetical order, uh, so I, some of this, looks like things are being deleted, but they're just getting moved around to make sure the list is actually in alphabetical order. You'll see the new paragraph six, family unit, um, on the third page, about halfway down. Here's the first kind of legal change I would recommend the board make. So some of the, uh, general assistance we provide extends to a family unit and not just to an individual, which, which makes sense. I would suggest, though, that you define a family unit, you'll see my red, uh, sentence, as members of the same family or household. That, that's a legal phrase. So that way, if you have two college kids who are living together and each renting a bedroom from a house, they can't claim they're a family unit. Um, that, you know, it says elsewhere in the policy, they have to, they would have to apply as individuals. Um, a family unit is a legal term, and people, people who are sharing household expenses, that's really, uh, the legal term, it, it actually concerns whether they're sharing household expenses, whether they're blood relation or not, if they're not, whether they're cohabiting, whether they're, you know, kind of romantic or sexual partners. All of that legal case law would then become relevant to this policy, because I, I assume the board's intention, if you want to support a family unit, we're talking about people who are actually a family unit in the kind of common sense definition of the term, and not just four or five people living together, uh, and trying to give, give general assistance. Uh, but so I would recommend that change of those, that's totally up to the board, of law, if you want to define what a family unit is. Uh, the next kind of substantive change, if you, you flip ahead a couple of pages to paragraph three point oh six. Uh, you'll see in the middle of that page, there's additional language being added, or has been denied assistance under state or federal programs, but has an appeal of such denial pending. Uh, this is a recommendation that came from Teresa and Mike. Uh, you would be expanding the universe of who would be eligible for general assistance, but in a very narrow sense. Uh, so if we read that paragraph, three point oh six, assistance shall be provided to poor persons who are in need of immediate assistance, who cannot obtain assistance from any other source, and who are eligible for and are awaiting approval and receipt of assistance under state or federal programs of assistance, or has been denied assistance under state or federal programs, but has an appeal of such denial pending. Uh, so as the policy currently exists, a person would be eligible for, so there's two types of people who are eligible for assistance, needy persons and poor persons, and both of those terms get defined in the policy. This is referring solely to poor persons. There's a different set of provisions for needy persons. So to be a poor person eligible for assistance, you would, one, need to be in a, in need of immediate assistance, two, you cannot obtain assistance from any other source, and three, uh, you are awaiting approval and receipt of assistance under a state or federal program. So this is meant to be a, a stopgap measure. So a person's applying for state or federal funding, but that hasn't been approved yet, uh, and in the meantime, the county will meet their needs. Uh, and Mike and Teresa said, well, what about someone who has applied for state and federal funding, was denied, but are now appealing that decision at the state or federal level? So it's kind of like they have their appeal pending. Uh, and this, uh, new language would say the county will still meet their needs while that appeal is pending. Uh, that, you know, as long as they're still in the process of seeking state or federal funds, uh, we will continue to fill the gap until a final determination is made by the state or federal government. Again, that's totally up to the board. The state law doesn't require you to cover those people, uh, but you can. Uh, and, and, uh, Mike and Teresa are recommending that you adopt that provision. Now, go ahead.
Is that a situation you ran into quite a few times, or?
Um, but I, I don't know of one for sure, and, and she had a concern that we were, you know, not gonna let them do anything, and that was her concern too, on that, so, yeah.
So, you know, Mike would still have to make the determination that this person is in need of assistance, right? So that's, it doesn't do away with those other eligibility requirements. Mike would still determine this person's eligible, this person needs assistance, or this family needs assistance for whatever reason, and it could just be a, a procedural error. They didn't put in the date when they signed their name, or they missed a page on the form, when they were, you know, some bureaucratic error. This would say the county will cover their, their needs in the meantime. You don't have to do that.
No, I think, I think our goal would be able to enable Mike to give assistance wherever he feels it's needed, yet we don't want the system to be abused. And I, I know Mike's very conscientious about those decisions and.
Uh, and then the, and I'll just mention the existing language. So if you look at the next se- sentence, it says, in the event a person who has applied for SSI or SSDI is denied, the person shall no longer be eligible for general assistance, and the rest of directors' exception is granted by the general assistance director. For, so your existing policy says, if the person's applying for federal welfare and is denied, final decision's been made, they've appealed, they've lost the appeal, they're denied, uh, Mike can still authorize them to receive general assistance as an exception, uh, if Mike determines they really are in need of immediate assistance.
Is that? I think we're all very comfortable with the way Mike makes his decisions and I guess what oversight is there if, if Mike, Mike isn't our director for this, for the next director?
The board. So there, there's language in here toward the end, um. Yeah, three point one four, it's the second to last page, top of the second to last page, three point three one four. Actions of the Board of Supervisors. In the event that the Board of Supervisors, in reviewing the actions of the director, questions any allowance of assistance benefits allowed by the director, it shall take no action concerning such allowance until it conducts a hearing. This hearing, the reasons for it, and notification to the applicant shall be given in the same manner as if the applicant had taken an appeal. So essentially, you have the right always to override any decision Mike makes. Now, because the recipient in the meantime has a property right and the assistance they're getting, for good or for ill, that's what the Supreme Court says, you have to have a hearing and give that person the opportunity to, to, uh, contest whatever decision the board's gonna make. Uh, but the board always has the authority to override the decisions of the director, and ultimately, he's employed at your, your whim.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. The, uh, all the changes again are, uh, just clarifying language, moving things around, uh, until you get to, uh, three point one one, initial determination. And if you find three point one one, then go to paragraph number three. So you're right above three point one two. You see a lot of red there. So this is another place where I think we need to provide more guarantees or protections for the recipient of general assistance to ensure that we're complying with, with the due process clause of the, the Constitution. clause of the, of the Constitution. So our existing policy says, in paragraph, paragraphs two and three, that when someone submits a request for assistance, the Director has to make a decision within three days whether or not to grant assistance. But then there was this curious sentence at the beginning of paragraph three, if the Director cannot make the initial determination within three working days, the Director shall immediately inform the applicant by telephone, if possible, of the reasons why such determination cannot be made. The Director shall also mail to the applicant by said ordinary, I recommend certified mail, within two working days thereafter, written notification explaining the reasons why such determination could not be made. And that's where it ended. So, and I think this is a very realistic concern. Someone submits an application, Mike has a duty to determine whether or not they're actually in need of assistance. And this policy authorizes Mike to, to ask for bank records, to look into the value of their home, and to do research. And it's very conceivable that the amount of research he would need to do would take more than three days to accomplish, or getting the records he needs would take more than three days. But then the policy was silent about what the Director does if he can't make a decision in three days, and then it's just open-ended. So I, I would propose that you add, in the event the Director cannot make an initial determination within three days, the Director must make an initial determination within ten working days of receipt of the application, and within two working days after this determination, mail to the applicant by certified mail at the last address shown on the application, the Director's written decision, showing the reasons for the determination, and the statutes or ordinances applied, together with the specific benefits and their amounts to which the applicant is entitled. So this is saying, so the Director, generally, you need to make a decision within three days. If you can't, you must make a decision within three days. Yeah, I guess even if he doesn't have all the information he needs, then maybe he just denies the request for lack of sufficient information. But I think there has to be some guarantee to the applicant, you know, after X number of days, you're going to get a decision. And this would give, this would be initial three-day cap, and then a second cap of ten days, if the Director, for legitimate reasons, can't make a decision within three days. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And it's, it's not leaning one way or the other on what that determination is, it's just make a decision.
Yeah.
Let, let them know.
Yeah. And ten days admittedly is arbitrary. You could say seven days or twenty days. I pick ten. But, um, I think that's enough to, to protect their rights.
And they're comfortable with that?
And then, if you go to the top of the next page, paragraph two, so here's something that I know the courts would require us to include. So this is if the person's appealing, so Mike makes a decision, he denies the person a benefit. The person now has appeal rights under this policy. Under paragraph two, any appeal must be made in writing and must be received by the Director within ten working days of the date the Director mailed the Director's written decision. The written appeal must include a statement of the reasons for the appeal and the applicant's current telephone number and address. So now, if someone wants to appeal, they have a deadline, they have to do it within ten days, and they have to state their reasons for the appeal. So this cuts both ways. We always have to provide our reasons under the Constitution. But now we're saying procedurally, if you want to appeal your decision, you have ten days to do so, and your appeal must include a statement of the reasons for your appeal. And then we have a corresponding obligation. And then a lot of this is language I recommended back in two thousand nineteen, that's already been incorporated into the policy. But, a lot of this would reflect the same procedures you have in place for vicious animals, about the, the, the appeal process. The person would have to come in, you would have a hearing, Mike would present the case file, his recommendations. The person who has denied benefits could have a lawyer here or representative to explain why they believe they're entitled to benefits. And then you would go into closed session, which would be allowed under state law, because you're reviewing, reviewing confidential records, persons, uh, bank records and medical records, all of that will be presented to the board. And then you would make a decision, and again, you would have to make a decision in writing. Presumably, you'd have your county attorney or some attorney draft that for you, but you have to have a written decision when you deny benefits now. And that's all included in here under these appeal procedures. So, and then there's, you know, there's hundreds of little changes, but all the rest are just clarifying language, not actually changing the substance of the policy.
And on three point one five, that, that lists all the codes that you're living by, or?
Uh, so, yeah.
Two five, two point one three, and?
Yeah.
So we've covered that.
Yeah. Yeah, you're basically just incorporating the code. So any, any benefits that the county is, is required or permitted to provide, the Director, upon application, can authorize. Subject to oversight, under the Board of Supervisors.
For you, Mike, does this make, does this change the function of your job much, or just make it very clear what you can do and can't do?
Yeah, I think it, I think it clarifies it better, you know? I think we want, at one time denial, and when we got the bank statement, the Sino, things on there, then they never appealed it, so that, this, this should help.
Okay. And that's, yeah. Yeah, the more clarity we have, the better it is for both sides.
Yeah.
Ambiguity would hurt us.
Any other questions from the board, from Mike or Thomas? We just need to pass a?
I think there's a resolution you should have.
Yep.
Adopting certain revisions to the Green County General Assistance Policy. Whereas Iowa Code Section two five, two point two five requires the Board of Supervisors of each county and state to provide the assistance of four persons lawfully in the county who are eligible for or in, in immediate need and are awaiting approval of receipts of assistance under programs provided by state or federal law, or whose actual needs do not be fully met by the assistance provided under those programs. And whereas the Director of General Assistance of Green County and Green County Attorney have recommended certain revisions to the Green Counties, to Green Counties' existing General Assistance Policy to clarify the terms and conditions under which four needy persons in Green County may obtain assistance from the county, and to ensure that the policy fully supports with state and federal law. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors for Green County, Iowa. Section one, the attached Green County, Iowa General Assistance Policy is hereby adopted by the Green County Board of Supervisors and shall enter into effect at twelve noon on November twenty twenty-three. And section two, Green County's previously adopted Green County, Iowa General Assistance Policy entitled Green County, Iowa General Assistance Program is hereby repealed. Motion to suspend. So, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Mike?
I'm just going to show current rent, um, that we've received requests for. So on the right, or on the left of the sheet, it shows from when I started till now, September twenty-third, and now to September twenty-first. Those are requests for the total of rent we received. We didn't pay out all those figures. New opportunities, they go first, and they fulfill what they can, and then we take care of whatever other agencies can't provide. It shows where the rental properties were, if they were government housing, trailers, apartments, whatever. And then on the right is our last three years' budgets. And you can see that the budget for twenty to twenty-one, seven thousand two hundred ninety-six, well, when it took over, um, there were less hours, so we dropped the budget down to five thousand for general assistance. And there's expenditures in the middle, and the percent we use on the right. So, and the bottom year is thirty-five percent of this already up.
So it's going up significantly, yeah, like?
Mm-hmm. Looks like it. There's enough to share, and so.
Now, these, these rental prices, is that an individual?
Yes. Well, it could be any, by any individual, but one, one unit.
So is that a, a month?
X, Y, Z, thousand, there's one that's a thousand, there's two that's a thousand, so, yeah. I think in most cases, large properties with bigger fans, and a house instead of an apartment.
And I can pass this around. So this is not on your agenda to act on, but just as a discussion topic. This is the current allowances schedule. So, so it shows the maximum amount, amount of money that Mike has authorized to, to give pursuant to a request. Two things to note on this. One, again, you'll see last updated, March eighteen, two thousand nineteen, which is the same date that was on that redlined version of the policy. I don't have any recollection of the board approving any changes in two thousand nineteen. So I think at some point, you're going to want to formally approve whatever changes were made in two thousand nineteen. The other thing to note, one time, the board has changed this schedule, which you'll see in the left-hand column, the second to last item, funeral assistance amounts, the board did approve an increase in that, it was a twelve fifty.
Yeah.
So this form is, is, has not been updated to reflect that there's now a one thousand two hundred fifty-dollar cap, a maximum allowance for funeral assistance. So that will need to be changed on the schedule, but I think, one thing Mike, I think, is, is suggesting, he wants to do some more research and get some more data about utility costs and rental costs in the area, but we may want to, it's totally up to the board, I'm not recommending you do or don't do anything. But Mike and I ran the numbers for inflation, because we all know inflation has really hit a lot of people hard the last few years. And so you'll see that, so for rental assistance, the third item down in the left-hand column, right now, Mike's maximum allotment, that's four hundred dollars per person, plus twenty-five dollars for each additional household member per month, with a maximum of five hundred dollars per month. Well, you can do inflation calculators on the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So we plugged in four hundred dollars on March eighteen, two thousand nineteen, what that would be today, given inflation, and it bumps it to four eighty-four. So, you know, four hundred eighty-four dollars today goes as far as four hundred dollars went in March of two thousand and thirteen. Five hundred dollars per month, that cap would now be six hundred five dollars per month. The utility assistance, in March eighteen of two thousand and nineteen, the cap was two hundred dollars. In today's dollars, that would be two hundred forty-two dollars. Now, I, I think Mike wants to look to see if there's really a need for an increase. But I think it may be something the board wants to consider down the road, is increasing those caps.
Yeah, I think we need to look at it.
I think some more additional information would be helpful. New opportunities have a, a matrix that they don't have yet, to, to figure out how much they provide for the applicant. And they told him that they could not use that anymore, so now they're going to go to a new system. She, she liked this, because it made it clear on what they, what, you know, you were, you were elderly, you were disabled, that would get you another point, so it's kind of checked with, I guess, there. So now that, yeah, so that helped a lot, yeah. Now that's going away, so in April, she's got a new, um, policy, she's going to have it formally on how to go around various funds. So if I can get more information on how much rates are going up, and then get her new information, maybe, maybe we could relook at this or something, or?
We can, yeah, we can relook at it, for sure. Where our struggle comes in is the balance of where our money comes from, what we can do with it, how we manage. But, we need to stay educated on where it's at, what, what their costs are, easiest costs. So, yeah, that'd be great, if you want to work on those numbers at some time next week, or whenever you want.
The policy is very clear that the county is, and is quoting the policy, is the funder of last resort. So they shouldn't be coming to Mike until they've exhausted all of their options. The problem is, you know, there, there's thousands of charities in the country. I mean, so Mike's always going to have some discretion to determine when they're kind of reasonably exhausted every option. And we can't expect them to be applying, you know, for hundreds of different charities across the country, you know, they can't keep their heat on. But new opportunities is local, and, you know, I think that partnership is important. And so I think Mike can reasonably expect them to go there first before they come here.
Yeah, yeah, if there's a relationship between them and you, that's good.
Do you know, do the energy companies have a program for assistance? We always hear about this, or through new opportunities, with, every month?
They have that live, live thing?
Live thing, that's what Teresa said.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The pain is through the energy companies, is that just a delay of the payment?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not here.
Under, yeah, exactly right. Under state law, they can't shut off somebody's heat, and you'll?
So they're still, they're still trying to rock it hard, not, even when the weather's going up.
They will shut off the heat once the weather gets nice.
Any other questions? Rick, Thomas, Rick. If someone appeals to the state or federal welfare agency, and the appellate is successful, does the federal or state agency backfill what the, what was missed in the interim?
I don't know. And it might depend on what program, or, I, if I had to guess, I guess, I would guess they do, but I don't, I don't.
And if they do, then would the county, the county clawback from that?
Great question. If the county can, yes, we, under this policy, the county has the right to demand that money back. But, yeah. So even if the person then rece, receives that, that assistance from the state or federal government, the county policy still allows the county to meet any additional need, yeah. This was, this was long overdue, and it's just something that, that we weren't able to get to, but the, the, the one thing I, I really want to emphasize is, we now have a much more robust appeal process in place, and I was concerned for a long time that our appeal process did not withstand legal scrutiny. Because the fear is, you know, we deny assistance, the person appeals to state court, which they can do, and the state court will say, oh, well, your appeal process was deficient, so they get the benefit. Now we have an appeal process in place that I'm very confident will withstand any challenges.
Good. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider the TIP, and then next.
Good morning.
Mike, good morning.
You got a seat, watch.
Yeah.
Okay. Put together a packet with a lot of information that may or may not make sense immediately, but I'll try to walk you through as best I can. The first sheet is the debt schedule for the TIP project, which is the pre-axing. So that is our commitment, that is the reason that we have a county TIP at all. So you can see on the right-hand side, I have listed again those payments that need to be made. And if you go down underneath the yellow, the next payment is that four hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and forty-two. So that needs to be paid on June one of two thousand and twenty-four. So we are current with paying our portion of the bond, okay? And this is the remaining payments that need to be done, and the dates that they need to happen. So when you go clear down to total, it's five million eight hundred and one thousand nine forty-nine. So that's how much we are having to pay for this bond. Everybody see that? Okay. So that's what we need to pay. Now, how are we gonna do it? So the next page. When the wind turbines went into place, and we decided to make those as our revenue source for paying off TIP, we first put in forty-one turbines, so that's what this page is showing you. I have to keep each one of these separate. So the forty-one turbines were established in two thousand eighteen. They are given a twenty-year life. And so this is the chart that I use to determine how much revenue each one of those turbines is going to generate, based off of how much net value is going to be used, based off of what levy I can use to generate the tax. So most of this, at this point in time, are estimates, okay? Because I have to use last year's levy, because I don't have the levy yet to create taxes. I won't get that until June. So I'm using last year's levy, which is an estimate, times the value, the net value that I know now, to come up with an estimation of tax. So when you look across line number, or year number six, assessment year is two thousand twenty-three, and you follow that chart all the way across, I am guessing that the total TIP taxes for these forty-one turbines will be six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. That's my estimate. Everybody see that? Okay. Then the remaining chart just shows what could happen for the next years up to year twenty. And again, this is all based on estimates. It'll change, but just kind of gives you a ballpark. And this is if we use all of the value, ask for every dime that those forty-one turbines can generate. We would take in the four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, excuse me, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. That's if we use it all. What we're gonna decide today is, do you want to use every last dollar that those turbines can generate? So that's one figure we're gonna look at. Next page. In two thousand nineteen, another wind farm was added to Green County, to the tune of eighty-five more turbines. So again, I have to keep all of those separate, and they are all based in different taxing districts. Each one of those taxing districts has a different levy. So that's why this chart continues to grow. So again, if you look at year number four, those are the taxes that the treasurer's office is collecting right now. Go right below that, year number five, which is the two thousand twenty-three assessment year, payable in two thousand four, twenty-five, and follow that across. For the total requested, I am estimating that we could receive one million, forty-nine thousand, eighty-six dollars for just these eighty-five. Now, at the time that these eighty-five were added, the board determined to keep them as two separate TIP districts. The reason being that if you ever wanted to stop collecting TIP on one of the wind farms, you could, and you could still collect on the other. Again, this is asking for full, every dollar we can get. All right, go to the third sheet. I have now added both wind farms together. So you are going to look at year number five, payable twenty-three, twenty-four. That is what we are estimating right now that we are gonna ask for. So we follow it across. Phase one total would be that four ninety-seven. And we take it all across. Jump down to line six, I'm a, we are doing fiscal twenty-three, so it's payable twenty-four, twenty-five. So go down to line six, year six. So it'd be six twenty-eight, three twelve for phase one. Phase two would be the one thousand, or one million, forty-nine, eighty-six. We could generate one million, seven thirty-nine, twenty-five dollars if we asked for every dime out of both wind farms. Last year, we did, we asked for every dime that we could get, because we knew of the schedule that we had to pay. All right, look at the last sheet now. I just threw this together this morning, just to kind of give an idea of the estimated timeline to pay off the TIP. So the top figure, one million, four sixty-three, ninety-four, that is the balance of the TIP account as of eleven thirty, twenty-three. That's how much money we have collected that is set aside to help pay off the Northland bill, okay? Taxes yet to be paid on six one of twenty-four is that four seventy-four, three forty-two, which leaves us a balance of nine eighty-eight. We're gonna collect taxes for twenty-three, twenty-four of a million, two seventy-eight, eight forty-five, which is gonna bring our balance to two two six seven, five ninety-six. And you can just follow the chart down. We then have a payment due to Northland for December the one of twenty-four, June one of twenty-five, of seven fifty-two. You do the math, we're down to a million five. We're gonna collect taxes again, these are all my estimates, based off of collecting every dime we can get. We've left a million seven, which brings our balance to three million two. We got a payment of seven fifty-two, two eighty-five, brings our balance down to two million five. If we collect again for next year, we could collect maybe two million, one forty-one, brings our balance to four million six. Now we have nothing but payments to go. So we're done collecting on the wind turbines, we don't need to collect any more money from them. We can now make our payments. Payments due December one, twenty-six to twenty-seven is seven forty-seven. Payments on December one of twenty-seven, twenty-eight of seven fifty. Payments December one, twenty-two, twenty-nine of seven forty-nine. Our final payment is December one, twenty-nine, and June thirty. Unfortunately, we cannot pay ahead, is that correct? So we have to pay Northland every year until twenty thirty. So we can't pay this off as well, but we can stop collecting money to pay this off, because we're collecting every dime, so we have a balance. That would then leave, my estimate is a million six in this TIP fund, once we are done paying. And that is collecting the full amount that we generate this coming year. You have the option to say, no, let's collect less. The advice that we had from Heidi last year was to continue collecting the maximum until we don't lead to any longer, just in the event something would happen to a turbine or we would lose that, which did happen, we did lose a turbine during the tornado that came through. Legislature can make changes, I mean, we're at the mercy of a lot of unknowns. So what I'm asking from you today is, how much do you want me to separate out to collect just to pay for the TIP?
Hmm? I think so. I don't think anything's changed since I would make an decision previously, so. Yeah, I think the match, again.
Yeah, I just wanna have a little conversation, Pam, you and I have talked, you know, about the real plan. We have an excess of twenty-two million dollars estimated for road construction projects in that area. So I don't know how that would affect that, if we continued, if, once we stop placing in the TIP, we can read, visit that the next year's after.
Right, so this TIP for each farm has a twenty-year life. So if we decide we're gonna go inactive on those for a period of time, we can reactivate, but the calendar continues on. So then we would not be capturing those years that we went inactive. So we stay active until we're done paying our bond, and then we decide, no, we're gonna put it back into the pound. And then all of a sudden, you have your project that you need to be reimbursed for. We can reactivate that TIP, but we just have the remaining years until that twenty-year timeframe is done.
Well, I think we've discussed that in twenty-five, we're gonna have to do a portion of this project. Your question is, can we adjust the TIP the way we're approving it today if we have a project? Yeah, I'm just wondering if you continue to put in that, you know, put in your backside, bank those additional costs that we can use in future payoff.
This is an annual decision, right?
It is, it's an annual decision, it's much like what the city has to give me by December one, to tell me how much money, how much value you need me to separate out before it disperses across the whole county.
If next year, there's a project secretary there, Rhodes wants to do this TIP development, we wouldn't pay them.
Well, for him to utilize, because he's got projects built into our plan, for him to utilize the TIP dollars, he has to spend the money first. So he has to find the money, do the project, and then TIP will reimburse him for what he has spent. So TIP cannot be money that you have to use to do the project. It just reimburses you for your expenses.
One second, if we adjust our rate with Northland, our schedule with Northland potentially, if we have money in the bank, do we store it up, is that?
We are keeping TIP money separate from any other Northland projects. So like any other bonds that would happen are separate monies. So we are, we are keeping this separated. So next year at this time, if we decide that next year is our last year to collect TIP dollars to the maximum, which will satisfy our five million, then the following year, a discussion can be had, do we need to continue tipping to the max? And that would give you then time to determine where you're gonna find the money to do whatever project you had in mind, and then this money is still gonna be sitting in that TIP account to pay.
So we haven't forgotten some obligations.
No, I understand that, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from a purely economic standpoint. If we have those dollars in that account, if I do a portion of the project under our farm and market account through the Department of Transportation, are we able to reimburse that account with the TIP dollars? So if I, if I expense it through the farm and market account, we have the option of placing dollars in that farm and market account. If they want general fund dollars to go in there, we could do that.
But we also could use the TIP.
Well, I just wondered, if that, if those, okay, if those dollars that you have saved up already, if a portion of those dollars could go back to fill in that farm and market account.
And I think that would be a conversation to have with Heidi at Northland again, just to figure that out. Once we are done with our commitment there, we plan to have more projects within that TIP twenty-year period.
I guess I'm just, we probably need to talk to Heidi, because, you know, we've talked, and I haven't gotten the numbers yet, but they'll be figures for, if we could have this route E eighteen, which is the now service, just cooperate, just inside the county. So we're not gonna generate any dollars off that, so we have to get that section complete in two thousand twenty-five, so. I'll, I can spend the money here, you know, within the next year and a half or so, but I'm not sure how we wanna do that, if we can do it through the farm and market account. I have limitations on how much I can borrow ahead on that account too. So I may not be able to do it all. But then if we can reimburse that account with the TIP monies, then I can kind of stay borrowed ahead and, you know, maybe.
Because we are in, I would be estimating that next year could be our final year, which would then mean us thirteen more years of using the TIP. Or the board can decide to throw that value, or some of that value, back into the county.
And I guess I have one other question, so, kind of, those turbines are done, are they about thirty percent?
Correct.
Are we at the thirty percent?
So thirty percent will happen next year for the beginning turbines?
I guess I just really wonder, what is our max levy rate at the end?
We don't have a levy rate.
Two million, I heard you say one point seven, I don't know, one of the years.
Oh, yeah, so they, I can continue these charts.
Well, I just wondered, is it around two? I'm looking at thirteen years, if we do two million a year, that'd be twenty-six million.
So I am estimating that the first forty-one could generate as much as twelve million dollars. The next group, I don't have that tabulation.
For our twenty-four million, probably, I'd double that. Okay, so thirty-six million total. Well, I just, I thank you for letting me speak about this, I think we just need to work on it to make sure that we don't, that I'm proceeding in the timeframe that we need to proceed. And we've kind of held off on this just because of.
Right, so we got a commitment that we want to satisfy, and I think it's a matter of, just my opinion only, that once you find a source to help you start your projects, the revenue is gonna be there.
Well, you know, the way they have this sort of attorneys, I think the bondy companies, it is the only way to go with this, to generate that response out, other than maybe using the farm and market funds, a smaller project. You know, I'm willing to go on that too, I can only bank, I want to hold about three million dollars, so. I can't really, I can't fund a twenty-two million dollar project through the farm and market fund unless we were, if you keep generating money in your fund, and we're able to reimburse. Yeah, I can't, I can't do the twenty-two million dollars, obviously, without giving the bond. I think that's the only funding source we're gonna have. A smaller project, maybe this first project, you can do it through the farm and market fund, if we're able to put some money into it immediately after, maybe contract letting.
Right, because the only project that we have in the urban real plan is just the career path and roads, nothing else. Nothing else. Any questions, Dan?
But I think nothing's changed since the decision last year, except we need to keep in mind that down the road.
So next year will be a decision again, do you want to cut back? Because we're gonna get really close to coming up with enough revenue to just keep in that account that will just slowly then deplete until twenty thirty, when the final payment is due for the trip, or for the career timing. And then if a new schedule is put together for whatever road is necessary, then.
That's what I'm saying, I would not like to see a cutback, I guess, if we can figure out a way that, at least start doing these segments, because there's a lot of damage.
No, I think that's a good rule for that. That was our intention from the start.
I understand a lot better now.
Good, I will put together the actual forms, and then sometime in the year in this week, people sign. All right, thank you.
Okay, next item is to consider a resolution to hire Renee Enderspoon as a full-time jailer at a rate of forty-seven thousand effective December fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
That will actually make us full staff in the jail.
Is it?
Yep.
You looked at me like that because you were gonna let me struggle with however you pronounce your last name. That was close and not complete. With a thousand dollar increase after certification, a thousand dollar increase to a yearly salary. Questions, motion to approve? Also, will you, on that second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
John, Billy, do you need a motion on the TIF indemnity certificate?
I think so. Yes.
Before, uh, she's gonna want me to sign it this week?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, we need a motion for that.
Thanks, Thomas. Let's back up to the last item, to consider the TIF and indemnity certificate. Chris, do you report on that? With our direction to Pam, we go with the full maximum. Again, for this year. A motion to that effect? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is discussion regarding imposition of the local option sales and services tax within the unincorporated area between Canada Island.
So, Kirsten?
Yes, you're here.
Oh, you are here, okay. Is Heidi on? Do you know, was, is Heidi, was Heidi gonna be here for this or not?
I do not believe Heidi is available this morning.
Okay, okay. She never got back to me, so I wasn't sure, so.
Okay. You're anything either.
Okay. Um, do you want me to start, or do you just wanna go ahead and talk first?
Um, either way, I'm happy to introduce it if you want me to do that.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, perfect. So, the county, um, has been considering some options on financing some projects with local option sales and services taxes. That would require both a change in use of the county's current language on the ballot and then also likely an extension of the tax. Um, I believe the sunset is coming up in the next, what is it, three years or so?
It's, um, twenty-twenty-seven.
Seven, yeah, four years.
Yeah.
Four years, so. So, the, so we would be looking at both a resolution to call an election to extend that tax, which is really an imposition of the tax when your current tax expires on that sunset date. And then also a resolution to call an election on the change in use of the tax to give a little bit more flexibility in what the tax could be used for specifically to be able to be pledged for the repayment of local option sales and services tax bond. So, uh, we're not looking for any resolutions today, um, to be adopted by, um, Billy did wanna put on the agenda some discussion on whether the board would want to impose a new sunset, um, on the tax that will be adopted after the current one expires. Or if you wanted to have that new local option sales tax go, you know, indefinitely with no sunset. Of course, we don't know exactly what the legislators possibly could do with, you know, lost tax in the future. Um, you know, they've been looking at a few changes to that. But, as far as what the law is right now, you could either impose, you know, a new sunset, um, ten, fifteen, twenty years, or you could just leave it that the tax continues um, in perpetuity without the sunset. So, that's kind of, I think, Billy, where, where we're at right now. Um, I know some, you know, we've looked at changing the language specifically to, for any lawful purpose, just to give you guys the maximum flexibility of what it could be used for. But, um, if you wanna discuss that too now, I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, to have, honestly, have a good, full conversation, discussion. We, we're minus two members today.
Oh, okay, sure.
So, I mean, we can have a discussion, but we may need to repeat it all at some time.
Um, I did not realize Don was not gonna be here today. Um, when do we need to have, because we need eighty-two days notice before we can have the election in March? So, we need to have a resolution approved.
Right. For, uh, I think I had thought that was, when I calculated it out, would be around Monday, December eleventh. Um, so there, you know, you do have time if you don't want to act on the resolutions next Monday. I think kinda what we had thought about, you could, you could push it to the fourth. Um, I could also provide you a resolution that has language to incorporate the sunset kind of in brackets, if you wanted to think about that at the same meeting. Um, you know, and you just, we just remove the bracketed language, you'd adopt it with removal of that language if you wanted to not have a sunset. So, we could do it that way. Otherwise, you could pass the resolutions at the fourth and discuss next Monday.
I think that would be better when.
And I'm not, we're having the discussion, I don't know if it's allowed, but to have it on that we'll act on it at the same time. I mean, I, if, if we have the discussion and we're thoroughly educated on it, I think during that same meeting, we could very easily act on it. I think, I believe.
Yeah, I, I think you could. Um, it's kinda whatever you're comfortable with. I think you could do it either way.
Okay. Um, yeah, we can put it on next Monday's agenda.
Pete will be back.
Pete, hopefully, Don will be here. Um, and if you wanna go ahead and send the resolutions.
Yeah, if we can have a look, look at our options.
Yeah.
Just so we can look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. And as far as the language for the change in use, you had kinda decided to, to include that broad language right on like any lawful purpose.
Yes.
So, it's, it's decided, okay. So, that one will be in final form. And then, yeah, I can just include some language that you can either, you know, put in a sunset of, you know, blank ten years and twenty or whatever you want, or just remove it and then adopt it that way. And I did talk to the council for Jefferson, and, and they are looking to put something on the ballot as well, I think. Um, so, stay tuned for that, but you do need that fifty percent threshold. So, I will follow up with them again today, um, to make sure they can also meet that December eleventh deadline.
Dan?
Say, so this is Scott with the city. Um, that timing actually is pretty important. We have to meet on the twelfth, otherwise, we have to do something special. But, uh,
Oh.
So, is it that both of these, both the county and the, and the city would have to pass a, a resolution seeking the referendum? Is that, uh, that question?
Correct.
Yeah, you have to, you have to meet that fifty percent population of the entire county in order to get something called for anybody.
But, they don't, they wouldn't necessarily have to have their portion of their, if they wanna change their revenue purpose at that time.
Correct.
They can wait until everywhere, all the other cities do it closer to twenty-twenty-seven.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, it is weird thing in the law, but it's just that you have to have motions from the governing bodies exceeding that fifty percent. But, you, yeah, you would not have to put your extension of the sunset on this, um, election date if you didn't want to.
So, it would just slowly be for the unincorporated area and not?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. If you don't meet until December twelfth, is that your next meeting date, Scott?
Uh, we got one here next Tuesday, but then, uh, the twelfth would be the?
Okay.
Uh, first day of December.
I think I had left a one-day buffer in there. I mean, it had to be the twelfth, but it.
That's pretty close.
That's not a, that's not a, that's not the definition of a buffer, that's a deadlock. Okay. John, I have a really question. I'll come back.
I think that question we're answering, I believe, this is just for the right, for the people to vote on the extension.
And to change and to the definition of how we can spend the money. So, there'll actually be two questions on the ballot, is that right, Kristen?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be one to change the revenue purpose. And then, the other one would be to change the sunset, um, either ten, fifteen, or make it indefinite. So, there'll be actually two questions.
Wait.
Yes, I, I just had a couple of comments. I, I, I don't know if we know what the increased revenue would be with the unincorporated areas added. Has there been an estimate done for that?
It's, it's, it's not gonna change the amount of money we're collecting.
We're still in fact.
We're still collecting the same amount of money. It's just, we need to clarify how we can spend the money. Uh, right now, it's worth a hundred percent property tax relief and any other purpose legally under the law.
Right.
And so, we need to clean it up. And the funding, we're not gonna change anything as far as your funding. Um, what we fund out of there, we're just opening it up so we can use the additional money that we have in there to repay, um, the money that we wanna borrow to finish off the project.
Yeah, I was, I was assuming that maybe some of those, um, businesses in the unincorporated areas outside the city, you know, that's what then start paying, have the local option sales tax applied, who knows?
They already do.
They, they already do.
Yeah, they already do.
So, that, that's good. So, that, that, that solves that.
Yeah.
Now, then, we really talked about our portion of it, since it was for rural, or for property tax. We could start off rural property actually. Um, that's what I've been to offset.
Right.
Uh, so, so we, we just have to, you know, we've had, have another conversation. I just wanted to make sure we.
Yeah. The funding, the, the way, the way, once we, if it, if it's approved, the funding won't, won't change what we're doing right now.
Right.
It's just the additional money that is there, we'll be able to use that money to repay what we need to borrow to finish off the project.
I've never known definitive numbers, what we, kind of average number we generate in that. Do, do you know that, Billy, or?
Not off the top of my head. I wanna say we're on five hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, so, when we're taking three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
But, we do have balance. We do carry over a balance. It's not like we clean it out every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I just think that, uh, you know, we've had the discussion, John, you and I did with Heidi, uh, briefly, I was saying, um, regarding this and, and, uh, the secondary road department currently, we're, we're gonna have to increase our rural property tax asking in general property or all property, uh, just to make sure we meet the threshold for getting our statements.
Yeah.
Uh, even with the, even with that local option sales tax money coming in. And if we would get rid of that, you know, then we wouldn't have to increase that.
No.
Additionally, but, you know, if, if, if we choose to use it for something else, so.
No, this, I think this way, we can still fund what we need to, to secondary roads. And we do pay for a car, uh, shared vehicle out in there also. But, um, this will still be a way of payments. That we need to. Yeah, for the age buy, yeah.
All right. Yes, Scott.
So, so what would be the action then that's requested of the city? Is it just to?
It's just a resolution calling for the, the election.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
And Scott, Don, yeah, I can either get that to you, or I told him I could send something to him if, if that was more easy for you guys, whatever you want, um, to do. But, yeah, it's a really simple resolution.
So, the, the referendum itself, would this, uh, would this apply to the other, the other communities in the county then too? Would they, would they, would there be a referendum, or would they be extending their time?
So, what will happen is, if, will the election, special election in March is basically just for the unincorporated areas. The cities will not have to vote on their portion of it until closer to the sunset date of twenty-twenty-seven. So, it'll probably be on the general ballot of twenty, November twenty-twenty-six. So, and we've got, and that, that was always our intention because we knew we needed to, we knew it because the sunset date is June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. But, then this came up, so this is why we're having to do the special, um, because of the funding.
Just to change the definition.
Yeah, yeah.
So, could the city seek to, uh, extend the term on it during this referendum then also?
Yes, you could, yeah.
You could, yeah.
This question, I'm not sure that we would want to.
Yeah. Or you can wait till twenty-sixth. Because the way everything is worded now, however you have your revenue purpose, that goes until the end of twenty, or July, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. So, none of that will change. Um, and then at that time, depending on what the board decides as far as the sunset, if it's ten, fifteen, or if there is no sunset, then at that time, the cities will go to all, everybody will not have a sunset. The cities don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, the cities don't have a choice on the sunset. That's what the board decides for everyone, correct?
No, the, the cities can have their own sunset, and I have not.
Oh, you can, okay.
If I won or not, um, I'm, I'm not certain if they do or not, but they, they could have their own.
Everybody's is twenty-twenty-seven.
I think we worked to do them all to the same, at the same time.
Okay, yeah.
That'd be the goal, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anything else we need to know? Kristen?
Yeah. All resolutions, Billy.
Okay.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
Are we gonna be on WHO News tonight? I see we're getting video.
Not yet, as long as you stand here.
Okay.
I'm the wrong person to be asking. All right, is there anything else?
I'm thinking of that, that bill for the road over.
Yeah.
John, I don't know if you, if you approve that, okay.
Bill for eighty-two thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars for the road over.
Sure.
On the, this is on the old.
On the old bill, yeah.
Do you want a motion to approve this bill?
Um.
Just initials from everybody.
I just, we normally don't make a motion. I just wanted you to see it since it was that large of an amount.
Yeah.
And Jack, are, we, do you have any schedule for meetings?
Not much.
You got my number?
Yep. All right, I'll give you calls soon as I can.
There's nothing else? Bulla germ. Thank you, everyone.